...session of the October 30th, 2023 Kingston Select Board Meeting. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, some do. Some do. Okay, so this is our monthly Board Committee Department Head meeting. Guess we'll just start. Any side want to start this go around? Marissa, why don't you start?
The holiday deadlines have all been set for our winter programs. We have the Thanksgiving Giving Tree and Holiday Meal Assistance. I'm going to start posting them around Town Hall on Facebook. They're going to be right outside my office as well. We have the budget meeting coming up to talk about my three sections of the budget. I am going to be recommending that I increase my hours from 15 to 17 a week because of the higher volume. So we'll be discussing that with the Budget Committee as well. And volume is still up. I've been trying to increase case management. Part of my hours going up is more case management to try to better meet clients' needs and also minimize the impact to our budget. So there's been a lot of...
Is 17 hours going to be enough, Marissa?
I think so, because I have some weeks that are a little bit more and some that are a little less. I think we should average out, okay?
You think that's a reasonable number?
I think so.
Okay.
That's it.
Chief, I think nothing's good. Everything's going smooth. Everything's going smooth as usual. We're in the process of turning the old garage into a training room. That's being done as we speak. It's being painted. They she-wrote that they put electric and everything in it. Should be done hopefully the beginning of next week. And it was at zero cost to the taxpayers. What's that?
That's because two contractors donated their services.
Yeah, they want to remain anonymous right now. I'm trying to talk them out of that, but we'll see.
Yep, make it turn green. There you go.
So first, the good news. Michelle Cole from our library, our Adult Services Librarian, one Librarian of the Year from the state of New Hampshire. So we're very proud of her. Our outdoor education grant is almost complete. I'm just waiting for a little bit of financial information. I think what is going to happen is the library is going to open an account if we were to get this grant, and all of the money would go directly through the library. So we don't have to have any extra services, and our bookkeeper can handle that for us. So, and that will all be put into the grant. So I'm very excited. I've been working on this since the spring. We're getting good feedback, and we'll see what happens. I think we find out in February whether we receive the grant, and thank you, Glenn, for helping me.
You should tell people the amount of money that you're applying for.
I don't have the exact amount, but it's about $430,000.
Say again?
$430,000.
It's substantial.
It's substantial. We have to have a 15% match, which we do. Made up from donations to the library and money in a building account and money from our friends. So we do have the match, and at $85,000, it comes out as about $430,000 on their part. So we'll see what happens. I'm told it's very competitive, but we seem to be a grant that they like, so.
It's more competitive than the first round was, but you've been working hard. And you know, what I've seen of the application, it's, you know, it's very good. It should be very competitive with the rounds, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, we'll see. And this is to build our outdoor education facility. The first two stages, the plan is to have five stages of this project, but we do have enough matching funds for the first two stages, which is to build a senior outbuilding. So people, three quarters of the year, can stay outside and play cards and whatever they would do in a senior center. And then to expand the pathways and make our trail handicap accessible and make it ready, hopefully, to connect to Selt one day. But that should be very nice. It should give people a place to walk in town with lighting and a place that's safe for them. So we'll see. A lot is happening at the library. We're working on our strategic plan, which is almost finished. It should be done by the end of the year. The prime portion of that plan is the Outdoor Education Center, but it also focuses on things like collections and programming and the standard things that a library does. We haven't done a strategic plan since 2016, and I don't think anything was really done with that plan. So this plan is one that we're going to stick to, and it dovetails with an outreach plan that we wrote last year that we've been reviewing continually as we go. We're also redoing our patron manual to make sure all of our policies are up to date, and we will share that with you, because I know you're updating your manuals as well. And I'm hoping that'll be done by the end of the year. And then the final big thing we have going on is the library is trying to start a foundation. We have five people who have agreed to be on our board, and they are working on a mission statement and bylaws so we can submit for a 501(c)(3) for that organization. So any large building down the road, hopefully, we'll have a little nest egg for that with this foundation working. So those are the big things we have going on right now.
Marissa is Melissa, sorry. Are the Foundation Board members separate from your trustees?
Yeah, they are. They're five totally different people.
Okay. And are we still on for chatting after this is over? Okay, so I'll reach out to you when...
Perfect, thank you.
I haven't been to verify myself, but I was told there's steam coming out of the museum basement. So the boiler has been replaced. You'll see a modified PO for Bell and Flynn that has the overages from paving as well as the shoulder gravel money that wasn't on the original PO. I've got all the supporting documentation, so this was what you requested last time. I just received the supporting documentation. And the other thing that's on there is there were some deceleration lanes on 111 that they had to get back to with their smaller paver, and that's been complete. So right now, we're just waiting on concrete and shoulder gravel. But if you have any questions with that, I have the supporting docs.
Yeah, so is this, this is going to be over what we're budgeted for?
No.
Okay.
The original PO was put in, but we ended up doing some more work just given the proximity that they were to the work.
Okay, so it's just, it's just an addendum to the PO, but we're still within budget?
Correct. Yep. And that's under the Highway Block Grant. We're just using that money now. There is still money in there, and I don't have it today because I'm trying to de-conflict. I have two quotes on crack ceiling that I wanted to get done on. Two of our management areas, I won't call them plow routes, management areas, but it's in anticipation of paving or treatment next year and then just maintaining what we have. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm comparing apples to apples, how they bid it. So I'll be visiting you individually this week to get signatures on that. With the warm weather, we have a window to do it, so. We did receive a Bridge Block Grant last year, and the large portion of that was set aside for the Main Street Bridge Project, which is still ongoing. Waiting to hear back from FEMA. Unfortunately, they've had some funding issues as of late. I don't know what congressional shenanigans this took care of or whether it did or didn't, but we do have some other money in there. So there's another PO for the guardrail on Old Coach Road to be repaired. We have $3,000 in the budget. It's over $7,000, but the remainder of that will come out of the Bridge Block Grant. That's a life safety issue that we really need. Finding a guardrail person is impossibly hard. And then the other thing we're going to be using the Bridge Block Grant on is the Little River Bridges. We were going to put new wood on those. They're kind of decorative bridges. And we noticed there was some damage to the bridges themselves and more of like a teaching point for me, what is acceptable amount of damage on bridge guardrails? And so we had CMA come out, and they're just preparing a memo on the condition and potential fixes for that. Kind of like when you call the electrician when you can't figure out the circuit, and it took them two hours to figure out what was wrong. So it was probably a call that needed to take place because the design on that is very non-standard, shall we say. So we'll see what they come back with. But those are two items that are going to be coming in front of you, but that's all coming out of the block grant for the bridges specifically. We're aiming for Wednesday to do a pre-construction meeting with the people involved in the project, not the customers. But, so we're hoping to get started on the Grace Daily Project by the end of the week. If not, the beginning of the week, depending on weather. And that'll be our main focus for the remainder of the season here, intermixed with plowing, hopefully before plowing. And we had 22 visitors to the collection point this weekend, so that's a pretty substantial increase. Word's getting out there. And that's pretty much it.
I've been working on putting the budget together. I think I have most of the departments. It's, I have the big departments. There's some small committees that I haven't gotten. And meetings on that start Wednesday. One thing I need is, if I don't already have it, I need copies of any contracts that we have that are for financial purposes because I just want to make sure that we're covered for next year in the budget for those. And I think that's it.
And that would be because previously, multi-year contracts were not really being documented as well for budget planning. So we ended up with a fifth year of an assessing contract this year that was about $60,000 more that was budgeted because it was a set amount for the first four years, and then the reevaluation year was much more expensive. But it never got documented in the planning of the budget, so we were short $60,000 to pay the fifth year of that contract. So what Paula is doing going forward is making sure there's notes in all the budgeting spreadsheets so you know that, oh, hey, this year automatically it triggers the increase when they're preparing that budget so that it's not a, we don't get kind of hit with that without realizing it was coming.
Yep. Is 11:08, Wednesday 11:08 at 6:00.
And Paula, do we, I know, I know you've got a million things going on, but we definitely need like kind of a reconciliation of where the budget is right now because we, I think we need to notify some departments because of some of the shortfalls that have occurred this year with things that were, kind of came out of nowhere or increases that happened with solid waste recycling. There may have been another item that came up. I'm not sure if that's been verified yet, but we're probably going to be coming to departments and say, hey, we realize at this point in your budget, we need you to maintain this level of funding that's going to have to be used to pick up one of these shortfalls. So we'd like to give you that number as soon as possible based off of where your budgets currently are.
I have the majority of them. I just didn't put it in a spreadsheet yet.
Yeah, if you can get it in a spreadsheet, get it to all of us, and then, you know, we can, we can have a discussion about it next week, next Monday, and then we'll reach out and speak with the different departments of what we're thinking. I'll stop.
Paula, can you, you say you have some that you have not gotten back for Nick for...
Yes. So I had given Susan, I think you guys all got copy of the projected budget? No? Did you make copies for them? Oh, so I don't have the trustees yet. I don't have planning and ZBA. And then there's a few that I need to go over with you guys for like health inspector and building inspectors, and then I just want to go over the executive budget.
Okay. So can, so can we put that on the calendar?
And I don't have the museum.
That will go over our executive budget.
It's updated. I don't have the ones I just said. I don't have anything.
So have you sent anything to Chris? So the board has the whole...
That was coming after our meeting today. I'm sending it to him.
On, is it, we meet Wednesday, and it's...
I know. I need to go over with you guys the executive budget. I don't want to send it without...
So can we just put that on our calendar? That we'll definitely discuss our executive budget next Monday.
Well, she needs to talk about it together with the Budget Committee for Wednesday night.
We need, she can put the potential out there, but need to know that we have to, as a board, have to discuss it before we put it forward.
I just, I just want to let people know that the people on Wednesday are Police and Animal Control Conservation Committee, Planning Board, the Museum, and Welfare and Human Services. So if you don't have those budgets, we are, there has been a lot of communication. A few people are looking for those budgets. They haven't actually had time to meet with their liaison. The Budget Committee hasn't had a chance to meet with their liaison for some of these departments because we don't have the budget.
So are you going to, for the ones you don't have, like planning, for instance, are you going to reschedule them for later?
We're, we're going to decide after this meeting how we're going to handle it because right now, we have a schedule where we haven't, there's some people who haven't met with their liaisons. We can review it live at the Budget Committee meeting, but it's not...
Not preferred?
It's not preferred. It's probably not the best thing to do.
Robin, did you have a comment on that for the planning? You gotta use a microphone. Yes.
The planning budget and the ZBA budget are both done. I didn't realize that they needed to go back to Paula. I have had communication with Paula, so they are done, and I will get it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we up now?
So, off-topic comments. So as of right now with, in regards to budgets, there's no spending freeze? Is like a cautious spending, maybe?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't initiated any type of spending freeze, but we have to scrutinize and just be cognizant going forward that there's, you know, I'm trying to get an exact number of what we're trying to make up for. And I get it, some of your departments may have nothing to do with the shortfalls. Some people, you were kind of, we were kind of left with baggage of predecessors, but it's all our problem at the end of the day.
I totally agree. I want to make sure that, like, you and I discussed...
Yeah, and I know the chief, the chief came to me with a couple of things, and I said, hey, chief, until we can find out where our budget is at, I go, can you please delay, you know, putting in a request or a purchase sort of those items? He's been very accommodating. I appreciate that. So I know I talked with him. You know, we're just, be very cautious about what we're purchasing. We'll have, we'll have an idea of exactly where we're at by, by next Monday.
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank Paula for the trick or trunk and for participation, although by a common feature. So we are in 100% compliance for dog registrations, thanks to the animal control officer. Taxes, we have not had a tax rate set yet, so we can't issue the bills till we do that. But hopefully, in the next couple of days, we'll be able to send them out. So I do need the solid waste insert as soon as I can, please, and thank you. I was made, also, in your pile is a new contract for the research company that researches when I lead and be, I'm going with a company that's based out of New Hampshire. The company that we used to use moved to Florida. We just like to keep it local and met him at the conference. I think he'll do a good job. I was made aware of a meeting with the Hampstead Kingston Republican Committee where they were meeting to discuss putting a warrant article on the ballot that would require hand count only of our ballots. Myself, Paula, Ellie, and a member of my staff went to this meeting, and we made our talks very clear. That meeting was advertised to not tell me, so I'm thankful that I found out about it, and I think maybe we persuaded some people to rethink that. I do want to hold a mock election. I did ballot training last year, which was great, but I'd like people to understand the whole process. So once I find out the date of primary, I'm going to do a mock election. We have had some interest in new poll workers, so I want them to know how it works.
Before you go off that topic, it might be a good opportunity to test ballots and ask some of those individuals who think it's no big deal to hand count, to actually do the hand count.
Yep.
Because for those that have never done it, it is an incredible task. And it's not eight people taking two hours to do 500 ballots. Not even close. We had, what, 19 ballots to hand count last March, and that took over two hours. On 19 ballots. So.
I think it's a great idea, but we have a hard enough time get, I mean, just don't be disappointed. We have a hard enough time getting people to participate in real elections.
Right. Especially the new people that have gone through the work at the election to come. And, you know, we have a lot of people that, that have worked at the polls for a number of years, but they don't understand the whole process. Because some elections are different to the other, then you want to explain why. We have been told by the Secretary of State, because Biden is not going to put his name on the ballot, we are to expect a higher than normal write-in amount. So that's also a cause of issue. And just remind you, Paula, that you could spend the day with me. Caitlin has gone to see the demonstration of one of the tablets, calculators that have been approved. I'm going to send her to see the other one, and then I know which one I'd like, but we're going to recommend it to you. You'll have to vote on it as a board to accept that calculator. But we don't have to get them right away, and I don't plan on it. I'd like to kind of let another town be the giving pig and watch the process.
And we're still paying for them? The state, state hasn't volunteered to pay for the new machines? They mandated, but they're not paying for them? Any idea what the cost may be?
Yeah, I have an estimate for the, one of them is $27,000. It will need to be $14,000.
So it's twice what it was when we first bought them?
In 1996, but how much is now?
So Tammy, are you expecting them to not put them into this coming year's budget, but the following year?
Well, I put $7,000 in my budget, thinking that I could encumber it at the end of the year, and then the $7,000 next. Or if you don't want me to do that, you can put the whole 14 in. But I can't use two different kinds of calculators. So I can't use the whole one in the new one.
Right, okay.
I hope that my budget for the elections will go in the bulk budget, so maybe it would be better to put the 14 in our, in our last budget.
We have four elections next year.
Correct.
So it's going to be a busy...
Set to be approved, it's conditional approval till March, so.
Even on, even on a machine, they can't make a decision.
I'd like to ask if Caitlin could have access to the cable channel, what goes on on there? Because we have it now running in our lobby, and there's some outdated information. So I was wondering if you would allow her to run with that like she did with the website.
I have no objections to it, as long as she just coordinate, because does, does Adam officially make? I mean, as long as she works with Adam to figure out exactly how to do it, to make sure we don't accidentally delete or put out, put out incorrect stuff? Anyone else have any issues?
Not an issue, but I believe the SLF would is actually responsible for what goes on the cable. So when there are changes, I think we should be notified of any changes.
Well, like, I noticed, like, my email address is wrong. So just little things like that, she could...
You know, you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah, I do. I also understand that, you know, some of this stuff, you know, just kind of slips under, you know, small administrative, I call them administrative things.
I totally agree.
Wrong email addresses, incorrect phone numbers, whatever. And I mean, correcting those is kind of a no-brainer, I think. But if there are substantive topic issues, it probably should be vetted here first.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was talking with Lori about, is there should be some process that only certain people can tell her what to put on and off the website, too.
Yeah.
I don't want her getting in trouble. And then one last thing I've talked...
I do believe the board, two years ago, passed a pretty extensive guidelines for what could be put on the cable channel and what constituted needing board approval.
Okay, could we get a copy of that perhaps?
I'll pull it out.
Yeah, can you pull it up?
Make a policy for that.
I talked with Paula. We used to use Seacoast business machines for our copiers, and they were very attentive. They would send us stuff when we were running low. They were, they were awesome. Now, apparently, they've sold out to another company. So I think there's a need for a new maintenance people that supply up. I know Paula ran out last week, and I know I'm out of machines. I got the place this last weekend, but when is the next one? It might be something we want to look at.
And I, they sold to another company called UBO. We still pay Seacoast, but it's like UBO is their supplier. And what I found out was the service for it to read all the copy machines was on my old laptop. So they're calling me today to put that back on. But from what I understand, none of the departments, even though that was on, that's only been two weeks that it's been offline. So they should have known that our toners were running low because I was out for two days, no donor. So I'm going to start looking into for next year, a new, it's just a supplier. We own all our machines, so it's just for the supplies. And maintenance.
I just have two quick things. One, new AEDs have been placed in service. Thank you to the Select Board for approving the ARPA funds. They are in every town building. The library had one, so they didn't need one, but we, there's one in the PD highway garage, I believe the two on-duty cruisers and the fire apparatus. So I will have Kelly in at some point to do a training like we did before with the new machines. Very simple, most automatic, automatic AEDs are the same. You'd open them up and follow the instructions. So I can always call 911. So thank you to the board for that. I spoke with Paula today, over the weekend, about, right now, my employees, my full-time firefighters, get paid what they are actually working, meaning one week they get paid for 36 hours, one week they get paid for 48 hours. So it kind of makes budgeting for them personally overly difficult sometimes. She did some research, and I appreciate all the work she does for me, that we can pay them an average of 42 hours a week, which is what most departments do, Exeter, Hampton, Epping. When I spoke with Cindy about it years ago, she couldn't find proof that it could happen. Paula, within an hour, probably emailed the right people at NHMA, and they have said that it is possible. And really, all it means that we, their recommendation was for us to talk to our legal counsel, make up, within the labor laws, make up our own pay scale for shift workers or whatever we call them, career firefighters, and then we can pay them an average of 42 hours a week. So I just kind of wanted, I don't know if you want to take a vote or discuss it further? Or I'm just looking, it wouldn't change any benefits or any of that stuff? Any monetary value going out?
Yeah, I think just if we were going to go that route, just have, we need the documentation legal before we would officially vote on it to make the change.
So it would, it would even out their pay from week to week?
Right.
So they're not having this up and down, up and down?
Yeah.
They do average 42 hours. But like, some weeks, it might be a little less, some it's higher. So if it's the same every week, it's, and a lot of towns do it. And I got the information from the lawyers, the labor lawyers at NHMA.
So I guess with your permission, I'll reach out to Primex, the lawyers there, make sure everything's on work with Paula on that, and maybe bring it to you guys next Monday? Yep, full presentation. And that's all I have.
I think all the departments haven't gone to the committees yet.
Yep.
But I had a text and then a phone call last night with Paul Butler from Recreation who asked me to speak on his behalf because he thought he wouldn't be here today. And in fact, he's not. He just wanted to report that, and this was referred to by... Uh, he just wanted to report that, um, and this was referred to by someone else here already today, that the trunk or treat apparently was, uh, very successful. He told me, uh, Joel, that, uh, at least someone in the police force estimated that there were about a thousand people. Uh, it's a lot of people.
That's huge.
That's a lot of people.
It's twice what it was last year.
And I'm just gonna read this because he wrote it out to me. Uh, he says, "Next year, I think we may need to run a shuttle to and from the high school," parentheses, "if they will allow us to park there," end parentheses. Uh, "and the rec center, uh, as parking and walking on adjacent roads was busy at best." And I guess, you know, that, it's nighttime at that point, it's dark. And again, chief, going back to, uh, something he mentioned to me, uh, one of the officers said to him that, uh, he came pretty close to getting clipped out on the roadway. So, you know, safety's an issue.
Yeah.
So safety, safety's an issue.
Button?
Button.
Button.
Instead of, um, using the high school and doing a shuttle, why don't they just do it down on the plains? There's plenty of room. And it's not all split up and they can park on the side of the roads, you know, be on the white line.
With a thousand people, it makes sense to have it on the plains and not be worried about the, into that recreation center.
Safer that way.
Yeah.
So I, I actually spoke to Paul Butler that night, um, and kind of suggested the same thing. He, he came back with, he wants to highlight the rec center, which I totally agree with. But safety wise, uh, it's, it's pretty bad. He had, there were people crossing the street in two different areas. There were people double parked on Wildly Point. So obviously I don't want to, I want Paul to be here to discuss it with him. But just something we need to look at next year is maybe a bigger spot or better parking or.
He could get signs, you know, saying this is a rec center, you know.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to.
Yeah.
To, to solve an issue here, especially without him part in the discussion. I just wanted to make sure to relay this, uh, at his request. And he, he said he might very well be watching, so if he is, Paul, hello. All right. And then he wanted to talk about, uh, placement of amount of money in his budget for police and fire details for his events. And I don't know if you want to take that up when we talk about, there's a line item for that on our.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda.
Okay, so let's wait and we'll talk about that then.
Okay.
And I think. I think that was it. Okay, thanks.
I'd like to invite up any of the other, uh, boards or committees that want to chime in today. If you do want to speak, you gotta come up to the table and use the microphone. So any of our boards and committees that would like to come and give any type of update of anything you have going on?
Questions for us?
Yeah, anyone? There we go. We got somebody. We gotta take her.
It, it's not CBA related, I'm just gonna put a plug in for the CIP to get your, for all department heads that have, um, potential capital expenditures, including ones that are offset by, um, grants, to get your CIP items into Glenn Greenwood.
Yes, uh, yeah, Glenn, Glenn definitely reminded me how late the town planner was and putting that forward.
This Glenn reminded.
Yes, reminded, reminded me that the other Glenn had, and so if he, if you haven't had a conversation with Glenn about any CIP requirements for the budget, please reach out to him immediately if you have any items that you need him to put in the CIP request. Yeah.
Right, cause we, cause the library was looking for the forms and we didn't.
And yes, it should have been sent out by, in August.
Yeah, it should have, those requests of the departments should have gone out in August. That's the, that, that's the, the planned timeframe with responses back by early to mid September from departments. The committee was supposed to meet, uh, and the final CIP was supposed to be put in place in time for Budget Committee and Select Board to have it during the budgeting process. And because that didn't happen, uh, now the Budget Committee does not have that, have the benefit of that document. So, uh, you know, we as a community were, were, we fell short this year. And that's unfortunate, so.
So if you can get it in by yesterday, that'd be fantastic.
You, you should have, every, every department should have, and, and committee and board should have received.
The answer is no, not for the library.
I got a packet. There was a manila envelope slid under my door like a love note, but it ended up being the CIP. Uh, so it, it came with the explanation of, um, what the CIP was, uh, by Glenn Greenwood, came with two blank forms and then the CIP spreadsheet.
Okay, everyone should have received that.
Then how do we get it to the folks that have not received it? Melissa, you haven't received it? Tammy, you didn't receive it? Glenn will be in this afternoon.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn will be in this afternoon, so we can get copies of those packets for anyone that doesn't.
I don't know if that, if my packet was specific to fire. I'll go back and review it again. If it's not, then I can photocopy it and at least get that out to everybody if.
I think he sent them out in emails, the general forms. That was my understanding, cause he asked for emails.
He probably didn't remember the library was a department, it's my guess.
I'll talk to Glenn.
Robin will follow up, I think. Thank you.
Okay. Any other department heads, committee members? Okay. So.
And the great Oz.
I'm sorry to pop out, uh, just because the, the cable had come up earlier. I wanted to, um, just address that, uh, because there was a policy, uh, just a policy and I happen to remember this. Basically, the policy that we had settled on was just if any, any town department or anything wanted anything put on the board, bulletin board. I'm sorry, am I talking?
No.
Okay. I was basically, it was just so you guys didn't have to approve everything yourself. It went through Susan and then Susan got in touch with me and I put it on. I'm not necessarily bothered by that changing. It just, uh, again, I wanted to just, nobody remembered what the policy was, which is fine. We, it doesn't come up that often. So I was just, uh, throwing that out there. And also I am gonna say one thing to defend myself, um, not that I'm taking this. Technically speaking, um, the email address, I checked the slide, it's just the outdated one and nobody. Yeah, and I, I'm not complaining, I'm just, it was like, I, I, because I immediately checked, it was like, oh, did I make a mistake? Oh no, it's the old one. And I just wanted to clarify, I was like, it wasn't wrong, it was just the old one. Uh, and it was just, again, um, it's the first I was hearing that it had even changed. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look up the policy, if the policy still, and if Susan has any concerns that any changes that are gonna happen would need the board's review first, she, she'd bring it up to us, so. Correct.
So Susan will filter it and.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, so obviously we had an item on here about the capital improvement plan, so we've discussed that. I think we've kind of, we touched on what we were talking about for, well, you know, obviously the twenty twenty-four budget. Folks, you know, have their meetings coming up. Anyone that doesn't have their budget in needs to have it, uh, so they can make their appropriate meetings with the Budget Committee. We did have an item on here, Kingston Days, the sharing of supplies.
So I think, um, this is a follow-up to have at the department head and the committee meeting, um, to talk about purchase, potentially purchasing supplies that we could share. So right now Kingston Day owns the pace with license for music that we all kind of share. Anything that happens on, that a town committee has and record it. We have licensing that we pay for all the events. We, we did pretty well with Kingston Days this year, so we're looking to put in some money into the infrastructure to have. And then we want to talk to other groups about sharing different things. So like one of the things you were just talking about is the trunk or treat. And the first thing that went through my head was you need lights on the plains to have the trunk or treat there. Because we have to put in a bunch of lights for Kingston Days. There's not enough lights to keep that whole area illuminated for any event at night. So that is something like we could discuss having and other things like parking signs and fencing and things to separate so that all the, um, all the departments could, that are having events could share them. And instead of each group trying to find parking signs or fencing or anything like that, so that we could all have a shared resource to have different events on the plains or even at the rec department or wherever.
Okay, so like a, kind of like a, just a pod that had like, like an events package in it, whether it's tables, chairs, road signs, cones, all those things. And any town sponsored event, we can make all the departments available to them.
Exactly. That's kind of.
So Stacy, are you suggesting or recommending that from the excess money from Kingston Days that we use that as the beginning?
Some, yeah, obviously we wouldn't want to, but we do have excess money. So if we use a few thousand dollars for lights, sign in, you know, post, don't want us to get posts, so we don't need kids anymore.
For some reason they're not meant to get commented in the ground, hold out fifty thousand.
Uh, but then like other sign, like we could get a sign that just said, "Event today, event today," you know, on the Kingston plains or something. And so it wouldn't necessarily be specific, but we'd be advertising that something was happening, so we could share it. Kind of trying to reduce the cost of each event.
Okay.
So it would save every single group that was having an event some money. So, um, that's kind of.
So are you gonna put something out to all the departments to say, hey, you know, what, what's, what do you think would be a good community needs package of something that all our organizations could use and come up with some type of list and cost?
Start here to talk about it and say, you'll see an email from me and then, um.
Yeah, and, and, and we think it's great, you know, looking at infrastructure, cause obviously we all support doing infrastructure upgrades to the plains, cause the town obviously has an appetite to be using the plains for events and activities. And, you know, it's obviously a very unique and beautiful place and we wanna, we wanna encourage, you know, appropriate use of it. That benefits the town.
So you'll be seeing it, but yeah, it's just so that we all are thinking about it. I'm also gonna ask for anyone who had public music to let me know that information, because I need to file, um, the licensing, we have to say what events we had, how much, how much we spent.
And so that licensing, just so people know, it's because even if you, even if you have a band that is playing cover songs, like you, we can get sued by these large corporations that represents the artist and the musician. So, uh, Stacy took it upon them to getting this multi-use license for the whole town, so that people weren't having to get it for individual events, so, um, cause it could be very cost prohibitive, uh, to a lot of folks that wanted to engage in that type of stuff.
Yeah, so the only caveat is we have to record it. And for a nonprofit, our, our cost is very minimal. But if we raise, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for whatever event and we spend fifty thousand on music, they would, they would want.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so then another item that we had, just to make sure we discuss all the department heads, cause we're in budget season. We had previously discussed, you know, police and fire details, you know, people, folks wanted clarification on when they're required, the rates, town sponsored versus private events. Obviously, I think private events, you know, fall under, you know, the rates that get paid, you know. I know that the chief, we, for police details, we waive like cruiser fees and admin fees for ta, for town sponsored events. Oh, we don't waive the admin fee, oh, cause it has to pay the, the additional retirement.
Yeah, we'll waive the cruiser fee, which is twenty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
The admin fee goes towards taxes, uh, the benefit as part of the, um, salary.
And so I think the board's consensus was before that if you, if you are a department that we, and I just want to make sure the board's still for this, we're moved forward with the Budget Committee, is that if you think that your department's going to have individual events, that you should account for it in your budget, because the police chief didn't necessarily want to say that, oh, I, you know, have to answer for, on why he has this large increase in his budget to account for other departments' events. So I don't know if the board's still flavor was, yeah, the rec department should, if they know they're gonna have these type of events throughout the year, they should say, okay, we, we've put in this type of money to account for our police and fire details for our specific events. Or if the board wanted them to all give the police chief a number that he has to defend at the Budget Committee meeting. Uh, and obviously, you know, there's, you know, we've, the RSA for, I, I don't, I don't know much about the fireside. But I know the RSA clearly defines that when it comes to the public safety events, it's under the purview of the chief to make a demand of whether or not there needs to be a police detail when it comes to interrupting traffic or those type of things. So, um, I know you, you know, I know you have, you seem to have a conversation with, anytime there's an application for a special event permit, it's not just that you're, you're getting this, there's, you know, those kind of conversations that happen based off of the size, traffic expectations, the crowds. So if you want, can you kind of explain how you make that determination from your side?
Yeah, it's gonna obstruct traffic anyway. I wanna, I'm gonna demand a detail officer there. There were a lot of events that I've said, you don't need one. The ukulele night. I told him he didn't need one. He came back and said, Paul, talking about Paul, he said, no, he'd rather have one. So I mean, I'm flexible if it's not, if it's, it's not gonna be a hazard in any way. I'm more than happy to just let, go about it without, without a detail officer. If there's alcohol involved, I want, I want an officer on a detail. It's pretty much it. It's not that difficult.
But, but usually they bring, those types of events require a permit and on that permit form is the signature for both police and fire to sign off. So you see the event, then you can make a decision at that time.
That's.
Whether it requires a detail or not, and most times it does.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's exceptions.
The, the issue though, that we have during budgeting season is that, um, the departments have to plug in a number in advance of doing a permit for, say, a particular event. So they're gonna need to know, um, or they're gonna have to at least estimate maybe in conversation with the two chiefs, uh, about what they will need for a particular event. They'll need to know what the pricing is gonna be, so that they can, we want to make sure that pricing is held through the budget season, through the year, through, yeah.
And so, yeah, so if, and maybe if the two chiefs, if you could, and Grant, how do you, you know, what's the determination of whether or not you have to have an ambulance on standby or?
So usually what I do is, it's kind of a unspoken matrix that if, uh, so normally most events happen during the weekend and I only have two members on staff, which is what's required to transport an ambulance. Excuse me, uh, so those two members are to cover the eight thousand people that live in town. Uh, so any, anytime, uh, an event, uh, intrudes on, you know, that coverage, so like the trick or trunk. If, if I knew there was gonna be a thousand people there, that probably would have, uh, triggered the, the need for an ambulance if somebody got hurt or, you know, just again, response time, uh, age of, of the participants, um, you know, all, all that stuff. Weather, all comes into play. So, uh, I guess I, just as a bu, easy budgeting thing, if you're planning to have an event, you should probably plan to have one police officer and, and an ambulance there. Again, just it, it deteriorates from, uh, you know, the, the ability that the fire department has to serve the, the general public that needs it, so.
And so, and so could both of, could both of you just send out to all the other department heads and committees what your current detail rate is, whether or not you have, you know, if you're, okay, so if you're, and if your policy says, cause some people may not understand that, you know, there's, there's a minimum, is there a four hour minimum?
There's a four hour minimum.
Okay, so can you just send something to all of them, so they know exactly what it is? So if you are planning events, you need to discuss that with the Budget Committee. And I know that's kind of last minute for some folks if they're gonna put that in, but they should try and account for that.
And, and on this agenda, it talked about town sponsored versus private events. So can we speak to what the difference is there? Because is there a cost difference?
Uh, I. Yeah, cause the, I know the cruiser fee is waived, so if it's, if you are an official town department or an official town committee and it's your event, that is considered a town sponsored event. If you are a private entity, even another nonprofit that is not associated with the town, you are subject to the normal outside billing, billing detail rates. So I know this has come up where, you know, we have a nonprofit that does attempt to directly benefit a committee and a place in town, but they are still a nonprofit, not under the purview of the town. We have no control over how they expend their funding. So it's just like, you know, when you, uh, so, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, like the, the, yeah, you, when you, uh, when the police, the fire association, when they have an event, they don't get discounted building, cause they're billing, cause they're a private, they're a private nonprofit, even though a lot of their stuff goes towards your event.
Correct, so for like this year's brew fest and last year and every year, we usually have two volunteers from my department that will, like I was one of them, that volunteered to be an EMT, um, and one other for that event. Uh, we had alcohol, obviously for brew fest. Joel had said, I believe one would be fine, but we wanted two, just to have one roaming around and one checking ideas. So like Paul, we try to go above and beyond, but yeah, we, and in years past, chief brings up the same thing. He charges us detail rate, we pay it out of our association and, cause I, I agree that we, as an association, I'm not. we, as an association, I'm not president anymore, but we didn't have to come to the board to what we want to spend our money on. You know, you could spend it on really whatever you wanted. So I consider that more of a private organization, but obviously directly benefits the town.
Yeah, because I, because my opinion is, if we do not have any purview over this association or committee and how it expends its funds and how we're billing, then it would not be considered a town-sponsored.
So I'm gonna, I see Ruth, and she's ready to speak, and I think this brings up the case in point where the museum, Friends of the Museum sponsor events, and they're a private entity that directly benefits a town, a town entity, if you will. So I wanna make sure that they understand how, how their stuff gets covered and how it gets charged.
So they need, they need to budget for it. It's not like...
Well, they don't come, they don't have a budget with the town, so they just need to make with their own internal...
No, I understand that, but it creates hard feelings. Just because it's Friends of the Museum doesn't mean they don't get fees. They're gonna have the fees.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I know you're saying that, but for the benefit of the up there, it's not the same.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Our question is, we, we think we might be having something on the line, and we have to find out whether, yeah, if there's a call, if I know what's happening. We were looking at the gate, but our budget is a town of Friends, probably people that raise money, but do we put that on our budget because that's Friends?
No, because you can't, we can't, because then you're appropriating town money to provide a service for a nonprofit that the town has no control over. They have to account for that, and they're planning for fundraising. You can't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support, and it's, I wouldn't support us, like, raising money to offset that, because it's, like I said, it's a nonprofit that is not under the purview of the town. Just like the fire, the police departments, they have the Kingston Police Association and the Fire Association. I wouldn't support them putting money in their budget to pay for details for those organizations fundraisers.
So Ruth, the, part of this is probably my fault, and I know that at the meetings that I sit in on with you folks, I can remember saying specifically that you needed to account for, you needed to budget for details for a coming year. And when I'm sitting with you, I'm sitting, and I'm talking with you, and there's, there are representatives from both the Friends and there are representatives from the Museum Committee, and in my mind, I'm not separating them. So I was probably not clear enough, but if the fundraising activity and the events are being handled by the Friends, the details, the detailed amounts need to be in that budget, not in the Museum Committee's budget.
Now, with that being said, if the museum was gonna say you were gonna host a large event at the museum, that was run by the museum and not the Friends, say you're gonna do a large, you know, open house for a day, and you were expecting traffic and parking and those things, that would be an event you could budget, put in, put in your town budget for an event specifically run and controlled and done by the museum itself.
So the determination is who's sponsoring the event?
My goals.
And where the, yeah.
Even where my goals, if my money raised.
Yeah.
Well, the museum, the money that the Friends raised goes to the museum. It doesn't go to the museum?
Well, we have no, we don't track that.
Okay, I'm just going by what I've been told.
Yes, I'm sure, I, we, you know...
That's why we have the problem, you know?
Yeah.
This understanding.
I don't quite understand. I mean, I thought if the Friends raised money for the museum, it went to the museum. If the Museum Committee raises money, then it goes to the town.
Correct, but so that's why, that's, the Friends, they may, they may choose to spend or make donations to the town, but we have no, we have no bank account, the Friends' bank accounts, we have no oversight of their accounts, we don't, we don't, they don't have to get anything authorized or approved for expenditure through the town from their account. So if they're raising money, it's a completely separate entity, and they're considered a private entity.
And just one kind of, kind of vague, is there any set thing on like, if you're gonna have a little event, you're gonna expect twenty-five minutes of government...
I wouldn't require one. I wouldn't require it.
Ruth, Ruth, is it green?
I thought I had it on.
You don't have to hold it, it just has to be green.
Don't put it down.
Oh, don't put it down. Sorry. So I didn't know if there was a...
No, if you have a small event, I'm not gonna require one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Especially if it's over there at the, at our, at the museum.
Really, it's still good in your province.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Fill you, oh, I'm sorry. Ernie? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Phil was first, he was...
This year, it wasn't so much a problem, because we're mostly on side roads, but next year, where we're planning on paving, my observation is unless there's blue lights there, we're gonna need details for paving on some of the paving projects that we have on that. So, I mean, that is the, I mean, it's not an event, it's an actual project that the town is undertaking. Is that the same guidelines? And I mean, I can meet you on the sideline here to discuss this, but I, I foresee that at least next year, you know, and we had a couple of small areas where we're working in the state road, where we had, we just had the guy who was on duty come out and...
But some of your guys did DOT flaggers.
Yeah, our guys are all flagger-controlled, but if we don't have enough guys or...
You may just need one cruiser just to have the lights to get the attention of people.
But we need it all day.
That's right. As long as they work with one of your flaggers, that can eliminate an obstacle, save you on that end.
But I think to your question, yes, you need to, you need to potentially plan for that accounting, because it can't just come out of the chief's overtime line or his, you know, what he's budgeted for to send them out there and then take away from what he's already planned on his law enforcement needs.
Just wanted to clarify, so I can blame you when the Budget Committee asks.
Ernie?
Yeah, I was just reflecting on the past, and in some cases, when we had a need for traffic details, if it wasn't a huge event, I think the Community Emergency Reaction Team volunteers were able to actually do that traffic detail as far as guiding people, you know, across from the plains to the plain cemetery. For instance, we had a, an event out there, we probably had, I don't know, eighty people, and we were moving them from the plains to the cemetery. And so we had the cones set up and all, but there was a detail from the Community Emergency Reaction Team who actually did that traffic detail rather than having a police officer there. Is that something that...
Ultimately, it all falls down to the chief of police when it comes to the obstructing a roadway, so it's something you have to be coordinated with the chief of police. I don't know if that's something that's happened in the past. Now, the state requirements that in order to do traffic flagging at all, you have to be DOT flagger certified, so, but any of those decisions would have to be, come to, come from the chief of police.
The amount of people is gonna play a big part in it.
Pardon me?
The amount, the amount of people that you have for your event is gonna play a major part, okay? If it's under a hundred, I wouldn't require a detail.
Okay, so those guidelines will be somewhere that we know?
Well, I, I don't, you can't even put a number on it like that, because it depends on the type of event, where they're parking, where people are staging, what they're crossing. So I think, it's one of these things, everything's gonna be situation-dependent. I think you just, any event you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have a conversation with the chief and come to an understanding of what the needs may be, and whether or not it could be a lower threshold. But it's, I, it's, you can't just, there's no, there's no form per number of people that we can fill out that's gonna cover every situation that comes up.
So the bottom line is you should plan some money for details.
Right.
For a couple of events. You should do that, and if you don't need to spend it, that's great, but it's hard to sit here and say, okay, for this, you would need to, for that, you might not need any.
No, I understand, that's fine. I, I was just curious of whether or not that type of event, that type of activity could occur using that, that group, but evidently, that's not...
What is that group?
Yeah, I've never heard of it.
I don't, I don't understand that.
But all I know is that under the RSA for the chiefs of police, they have the ultimate authority for it, and we don't even have the purview to overstep that.
You're just gonna walk them across the street? Like you said you had in the bed, we had eighty people, and you just wanted to walk them across the street from the plains to the cemetery?
Yeah, we had about eighty.
I would, I would probably just have one of my cruisers go and just say, you know, that's on duty, help them across the street. Once you're across the street, you're good to go. So I wouldn't need a detail officer there the whole day. You know what I mean?
The, it was Community Emergency Response Team, C E R T. It was set up a number of years ago, before some of the flooding we had. Probably a dozen people in the group, it would've came down to about five or six of us that would go out regularly, do traffic details for the Sanborn Parade and Memorial Day, things like that.
Yeah, that no longer exists.
And, and, exactly, we, we've...
Did he say it no longer exists?
Well, it, it just sort of died a natural death, Frank sort of left, and so, you know, I think Mike LaPage was the last officer in charge of that before he left. So anyways, the, several of us had the state training, or the, the old training on traffic management, took the course and got certified. So there are people still in town who are still certified, but the C E R T isn't ever called up anymore, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have a decision, a opinion on it right now. I wanna, I wanna ponder that a little bit before I do that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right. That being said, if there are any organizations that would like someone who is flagger-controlled, they can just email me, and we typically, every year and a half, we hold the class, NHMA puts it on. Yeah. So if we have more bodies, all better. Okay. All right, anything else for department heads, items, issues, subjects, before we go to first public comment?
One thing I forgot, I talked to Trish about the wage, the joint wage meeting between the Budget Committee and the Select Board, and she said eleven fifteen to have, I know we wanted to have...
Okay, yeah, we had, we had a couple of dates.
Eleven fifteen at seven, seven PM. Where, here?
Can you send that out as a calendar invite?
I will. I don't, I said I would talk to you guys to make sure it was okay with you all first, and then...
Is it a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
I think it's a Wednesday.
She didn't wanna do it on the eighth, because the meeting would go too long, so.
That's fine.
I just wanted to make sure first, and then I would figure out where.
And so what it is, this will be essentially a presentation from the Wage Salary Working Group, so that we can present what we have to both the, you know, the Select Board and the Budget Committee at the same time.
At the same time. We didn't wanna wait till December.
And, and, yeah, we didn't wanna wait till December, because that way, if either of those boards have further information that they'd like to get and see and discuss, we can maybe get some more information if they're looking for it.
Should the department heads go, so we can see what the plan is?
It's a public meeting.
Put some input in?
Well, have you, all the department heads should have been reached out to, to ask for some input on what's been going on.
I, I mean, we've been, had information requested of us, but no, I mean, kind of vague updates on what the final plan is.
I'll be reaching out to you this week, I was on vacation.
So you will be reached out to, to have some input, but you are still gonna be more than welcome to attend the joint meeting. Yes. All right, public comment number one. Anyone? Okay, old business. We have our assessing contract to sign.
You do not.
Okay, we do not.
Yeah, we chose on a contractor for the new assessing contract. They're having it reviewed by DRA, which I never knew they did, but she said it would be a couple more weeks before she gets the signature page over, so.
I would much rather have DRA review it before we sign it.
But we have the numbers for the budget, at least.
They're looking at the two we have?
What?
DRA looks at them before we look at them?
Apparently, yeah. She, she has them review and approve it before she signs it and sends it to the town.
So we're assuming that if they're both okay, she would approve both of them?
They should.
If they're, both were okay, she would approve both of them? We have to determine the money part of it, let alone what...
Well, we know what the amount is.
Yeah, we picked, we picked one that we wanted to review further.
Right, it's just that the terms of the contract, I think they're reviewing. The DRA likes to look at what they're...
Yeah, there was a, there was the one that we picked.
We, we did pick a vendor.
Yeah.
We had four responses, and we picked one.
We did, yeah, but we don't have the, the final contract here to sign yet, because they're having it reviewed.
Solar meeting recap.
Okay. So the chair of the solar committee is here. I'm going, you can stay there, Rick, that's fine, but just so everyone knows, he's here, and if, if he wants to speak, I would, I would invite him to do so. But the solar committee did meet last Thursday. I was there, we had, we had enough members, we had a quorum. I was there representing the Select Board, and Laurie, as, as my alternate, was also there for the discussion. We had the folks from Revision Energy come in and primarily to update us on some changes that have happened to the legislation in New Hampshire. When, when, when the solar committee brought a proposal to the board last year, there were limits on the net metering program, and to do a large-scale solar project was not feasible, it did not, because of the load that the town used, the municipal electric load was not high enough, it, it did not make sense for us to do a large-scale project. We proposed a small-scale project, but that, that was not, that did not move forward with, with the Select Board at that time. So legislation has since changed. The governor has signed a new legislation which allows municipalities, as an example, to build up to a five-megawatt solar array to produce electricity, and that electricity gets fed into the grid, and we, we as a municipality benefit by it, but other neighboring municipalities can also benefit because of the new net metering program. And so we got updated on that, and, and just to step back a second, the solar committee last year went through an RFP process to select a vendor to work with, and we had chosen Revision Energy, and they had been our, they've been our partner to work with, which is why we, we reached out to them again and had them come back to us. So the bottom line is that there is a, a real opportunity for us to use a property in town that is currently costing us money, but could be used potentially for the production of electricity by a, so having a solar farm there, and that's the, the closed landfill. It fits a lot of the requirements for, for sighting with regard to exposure, the interconnection to the electric grid is right there, there's a, there's three-phase power, there's also the circuit, the substation that that one is on has capacity for interconnection. So it, it, and that's the other critical piece of this, as, as these new solar facilities come onboard, the grid that it feeds into has to have the capacity to, to support it. And the new unitil one that's going in in the southern part of Kingston is actually going in through a different substation. This one would be on a, on a different line. But bottom line is that it's an opportunity for, for the town to consider having one of these facilities there, in addition to providing us with electricity for our municipal uses. The, the lease of that land by the solar production entity would be, would be significant, potentially significant revenue generator for the town. In the, over twenty-five years or so, it's, it's over a million dollars, so it's, it's not, it's not chump change. So, and I'm gonna ask Laurie and, and Rick maybe to fill in some of the gaps, I just wanted to make sure you had the basic lay of the land for now. If, what, what the solar committee voted last Thursday to do was to bring the information to you here as a, as the Select Board, and to, to ask that we schedule a meeting in the future, and we're suggesting November thirteenth at our, at our Select Board meeting, to have Revision back to have a discussion with the entire Select Board, and, and, and to see if, to see if, and do it as a public hearing, so there's public input, and to see if the, if the Select Board would like to move forward. There are some time constraints here. Because of the change in legis... Because of the change in legislation, there's a lot of interest from other communities in getting, getting solar facilities onboard and the first step in the process is getting into the queue for connecting to the grid. And if those communities that are early on, first in, have that spot held for them and if you happen to be later in the process and the, the grid needs to be updated or the substation needs to be updated, that adds additional cost to your project and so it becomes less favorable financially to do it if, if we're, if we're later to the, to the process. So I, I probably said too much, but Laurie, maybe you could.
Actually, you pretty much summarized the meeting, but Phil, we do, I addressed a lot of your questions, so we're gonna have an offline with that, okay? Yeah, I think that the, the biggest point was with the change in legislation, I know that Rick has been fielding some calls from out-of-state companies because it's an open market now with the change in legislation where multiple municipalities can benefit from the solar farm. So it's, if we want to do it, it's, you know, we should look at doing it sooner rather than later because the costs would then be added to the construction if we have to make changes to the substation, right, to, to, to hold the power, so.
So would the Solar Committee's intention be that, obviously, public hearing, have Revision come in, do a presentation, discuss, has the Solar Committee talked about how, how this would be financed? Would we be looking to put on a warrant article?
No, it's, it's no cost, it's no, so the cost is, is taken by the investment to Revision and they, they handle all of the construction costs and what, what it could mean is less revenue. If, say, we were the 10th municipality that wants to use that substation and they have to expand the substation, then it, it costs more to build the solar farm, right? So that means it, it goes into your lease payment agreement. So you might get less revenue for your lease, so we're not putting up any money at all, all the costs, because we're, they're leasing the land, so we're getting.
Okay.
We're leasing the land.
Okay. And I was just curious, because I know the county's five-megawatt solar farm is costing about eight million.
No.
Right, and if we were to buy it, it would be about a $20 million project.
Yeah, right.
But in this case, it's an investment firm along with Revision that would finance it and own.
Yep.
The solar farm, if you will, and they'd be leasing our land and providing us a lease fee for that.
And then there's also tax revenue from that as well, so there's different options on, on how you, you're, you, you look like you have some questions, Elliot.
You know, I, I feel like we're under the gun again. Are we under the gun again? And you have to make a quick decision? Are we gonna have an opportunity to see whether it's worth foregoing a $20 million investment to get just leased the land? I'm feeling frustrated because I feel every time we deal with solar, as much as I'd love to see some solar panels in here to reduce that carbon footprint, which is a great thing.
Right.
But I always feel like we're under pressure to make a quick decision that may not be in the town's best interest.
We, we don't have to make a quick decision.
We don't.
We don't, we don't. However, we need to realize that if, if, if this is an opportunity that we think is worth doing, the timing for, could be beneficial for us to do it now. We could take a different path, we could choose to build a system and own it ourselves and.
And that's $20 million.
That's a, that's a lot of money.
Also, you're looking at a substation problem too, right? We, if we, if we did, we would still, I mean, the substation that we go into only has a certain amount of capacity, so, yeah, so that's, that's the thing, right? So yeah, we could absolutely go about it multiple ways, but it, it would add to the cost.
I think that, I think at this point, all we're looking to do is, is to get the representatives from Revision here in front of a full board to hear what the Solar Committee heard and then the Board can decide how it wants to proceed. But I, I, I mean, I, I know that I'm not doing their presentation justice. They, they spent a couple of hours going through a lot of this in detail and they have a lot better information approach than, than, than I've been able to give you.
Yep.
Phil, more for you. When they build these solar panels, how far into the ground do the brackets go?
They don't.
So that was part of the, the thing. So because it's a landfill, they don't drill, we can't compromise the, the, the cap and this is the, that they're, have built multiple landfill solar farms, so they don't dig into the ground.
So they would be, if there was a problem with the, you know, I don't know how they drive, how big are the trucks they drive in there or whatever they're gonna do, they're assuming they're taking the liability if there's a, a sinkhole or something happens, they take care of it?
So, so part of the first step in, in all of this is they're looking at the interconnectivity into the substation and then they are assessing the integrity of the cap of the landfill and they are determining what changes or what upgrades need to be made to ensure.
Yeah, actually, the.
Or to mitigate any, any problems.
Actually.
And then there's a operation and maintenance throughout the life of it.
I mean, should the town choose to move forward, the very first step would be for Revision to do a full investigation and determine if it's even a suitable site for it.
Right, right.
And it, and it might very well be that they find something in their investigation that's, oh my God, we can't do it here. But again, but again, it's, it's not on our dime.
Right.
Correct.
It's not on our dime, right.
Rick, go ahead.
I, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
They weighed them down and there's been nothing heavier than a pickup truck on top of that landfill in the 20 years it's been there. And I can tell you the weights to hold the giant sail on there are extremely heavy, so.
The, obviously, the integrity of the landfill is paramount, number one, no question. And from a environmental standpoint, I, I fully appreciate that. At the same time, we are talking about a $20 million project. The, the capacity of the plug-in across the street is right now is a little under 10, 10 megawatts. This would be five megawatts. When we, what they, Revision will probably come in here and ask is that the Select Board enter into a, a option where they pay you maybe a thousand bucks a year for four or five years. That's how long it potentially goes, so it's not like nothing's gonna happen immediately. They will go out in that case and then spend probably a hundred thousand or more dollars investigating the, the, the cap and things of that nature. By having the option agreement, we get in the queue so that we get five of those megawatts in that plug-in across the street. So it's important to get in the queue, if you will, if nothing more. At the end of the, whether, and it may be three years, four years, or five years, they're gonna say, this is viable and this is what we can do. And at that point, the town would potentially enter into a lease agreement for, say, 35 years, at X number of dollars per year that would have to be in good faith decided on and we would get revenue to do that. If at the same time the town says, you know, we don't want to do this, the town, no obligation to do that at all. So it's not like nothing, nothing is going to happen immediately. I mentioned, and Laurie brought up the idea of, of the integrity of the landfill and like, for example, there was a slide. And, and James Hasek, as some of you know, he's on a national committee on this thing on landfills, said, first of all, it, it wasn't done right if there's a slide. And he said, we have to make sure it's done right. He said, let me tell you, no investor's gonna come out and spend $20 million on something that's gonna fail. He said, if you think the townspeople ask pointed question, the investors are gonna ask a lot more pointed questions before they pony up and spend that kind of money in Kingston. So, and I've actually asked James to actually sit down with Phil, because I know he's got concerns, to actually meet with him beforehand to actually go over some of these things that his concerns have to try to get those answered. I mean, obviously, there's a certain number of pounds per square foot that are capable of the landfill holding and so on and so forth and you can't exceed that and they have to work with D E S on all those things and, and get the questions answered. So the presentation hopefully will be enlightening for the Board and, and, and just so you have a sense of kind of overall where it would go and it could be anywhere from a million to over 30, two and a half million dollars that the town will get in, in addition to revenue from taxes. So it is an opportunity for us in the one piece of land we really can't do anything with to make lemonade out of lemons, so it certainly warrants serious consideration and hopefully the Board will do that, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm interested in getting more information, I just, you know, wanna wait and see before we commit to anything.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So if the Boards, are we okay with the, putting it on the 13th?
Yes.
For as a, and, you know, not, not have it, you know, put out as a public hearing?
Could we do it as the first item?
New business. Approved use of the Lone Tree Campground discussion. So we followed up with, we had the Town Planner follow up and review the meeting minutes regarding the use out at Lone Tree Summer Camp. He has obviously provided in our packets indicating that the way they are currently using the camp is not within the confines of the approved site plan, which, when they came before the planning board, they were very adamant that they were gonna continue to use it as a summer camp and try to do youth programming and those type of activities. That is clearly not what's been happening out there. You can hop on Airbnb and see, you can rent the fort, you can rent cabins out there. Those people then, we, you know, we've been getting people that are homeless that are staying there and apparently they're paying cash off the books and then they're coming to seek services from the town. But we feel that we need to issue a cease and desist letter, so for the activity that's outside the approved uses and I believe the timetable is that they're not supposed to be there after October 15th and I know the Chief of Police and I have driven out there and passed the 15th and there are still tents set up out there and people essentially just living full-time in cabins that are being rented out like apartments. So I would take a, a motion that we vote to issue a cease and desist that will be drafted by the Towns Council, which I have already explained to her that we may be seeking this, but I think we need an official vote to issue a cease and desist that'll have drafted by Town Council.
And, and, and with the, I, yes, I'm in favor of the cease and desist on the, on the basis that they are not in compliance with the approved site plan.
Advertising and Airbnb on that site is clear.
So, yeah, just based off of the meeting minutes and the explanations, you know, the Town Planner agrees that they are not within the provisions of what was an approved uses of that site plan, so I, you know, that'll end further discussion. Let me just take the motion first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'll continue to work with Town Council and I'll, I'll sign any documentation that's needed for that once it, once it's ready to be issued. Open bids, point-of-entry treatment system.
You guys, all you guys on the screen. So once either of you think you have enough information that you can give us an idea of what you have.
Well, I have the bid from, oops, sorry, thank you. I have the bid dated October 25, 2023 from the Water Tex, that's the name of the company, Water Treatment Systems. And it looks, they, they put everything into a, into a convenient table, fortunately, so it's broken down to the various components. There's the initial water sampling, the installation of the 20 new systems for treatment, inspection of the existing six systems that are already out there, newly installed systems, six-month sampling, maintenance beyond that, and checking all systems at the end in a sampling visit. Anyway, the bottom line is $254,316. And then there are some contingencies and they are to be determined. The first contingency is installation of iron and manganese, iron and/or manganese pre-treatment system. And depending on the level of iron and manganese, the price varies from $2,050 to $2,450. And then contingency number two, installation of radon pre-treatment and that's at $5,300. I'm not sure those contingencies.
What company is this?
This is Water Tex.
Water Tex.
I'm not sure that the contingencies relate to the contract. It's not the issue, it's not the, it's not the PFAS, it's, now, if, if it's somehow connected to it, I don't know.
Yeah, they, they would like that option in there to make sure that the POA system is gonna work properly.
Okay.
So it's a suggestion. We don't have to do that, but since we're gonna maintain it going forward, we wanna make sure it's, doesn't have to have its filters changed a lot more times than normal because of those other things in there.
Yeah, because I, I think that the cost of maintaining, the cost of maintaining a, a manganese system, which, you know, for that, I know I have in my house and it's, the water that comes out of it is pretty bad, but, yeah, I think there, I think the concern is that if it's not treated, if it needs that and it's not treated, it's gonna contaminate the POA system, which the, the filters for those are much more expensive.
So what this, what this, on these contingencies, it doesn't, those amounts that I listed, I'm not, it doesn't say if that's per system.
Oh, that's per system.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, I mean, I mean, that, that could easily, added to the subtotal above, put us well over our grant amount.
Yes, because what's our?
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight, right.
I think the hope is that they'll sample for that first and those won't be needed or may already be in place on a person's home, but they have to, they feel like they should check for it.
So I have Allied Clearwater in the same, the same as Glenn has there. They have initial water quality sampling, $1,300 plus $700 for two PFAS tests, 15 Rockingham Road and 150 Main Street. Installation of POAET systems, inspection of the existing systems, newly installed systems, six monthly sampling visits, existing systems, July maintenance visits, all systems G A C changeout and sampling visit, twenty, and they have numbers as to the quality. And their total bid is $156,700.
Whoa.
So.
And what about, and what about the contingencies?
And they have the, the same.
To be determined.
Yes, $2,000 on the installation of iron-magnesium pre-treatment systems.
That's a huge difference, yeah.
And installation of radon pre-treatment systems, $5,000 system, $5,000. So there's a significant difference, so.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not a, you know, I'm not a, obviously, a water testing guy, but I have, I just don't understand how radon, radon would affect a POA.
Quality of water.
A POA system because radon's kinda down the line, it's the last thing, as it aerates the water prior to any filtration, so.
Why do they call up specific addresses? Is that for each? I, I'm confused by that.
Are those, are those the two existing systems?
No, there's six.
There are six.
There's twenty that we're, we need, so I don't know why they call.
This had two, two tests on this particular, those two locations have.
No, it has, it has all of them getting sampled, but there's two, there's two. No, it has, it has all of them getting sampled, but there's two, there's two that have additional testing. There's two addresses that show for two PFAS tests. But it shows all twenty-six getting initial testing.
Are the quantities on that one the same as the quantities on this one?
There is, but it says.
Twenty-six.
Look at this. Oh, it just, it breaks.
The company that bid the four-hundred thousand is the company that's doing it now.
Yeah, Water Tex does it now, but I I feel like there's, there's.
Okay.
That's, that's such, there's a disconnect, because that's a huge difference in cost.
So are we going to have Sanborn Head review these?
Well, that, and that was going to be my motion, is that, um, uh, I mean, even if they were close, I would want Sanborn Head to review it, just to make sure that we, that we make the right choice here. And and we have contracted with Sanborn Head to, uh, to to do that and to support us in this effort, so.
Yeah, so if the motion could just.
The motion would be to, uh, to have Sanborn Head review these two proposals and make a recommendation to us.
Or 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 provide a, provide us.
An analysis.
An an analysis of the two contracts, because so that we can make a determination.
That they're action, that they're.
Yeah, that they're, that they're apples to apples that we're looking at.
Yeah, I feel like something's wrong there.
Yeah.
That's a huge difference for, yeah.
Home town business.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, uh, Susan, I know that that you know that this is time critical, obviously, and, um, the sooner, I mean, if we could have a, have it back so we could have a discussion and make a decision next Monday, uh, that would be ideal.
The plan, because it still has to go to DES.
Right.
But we're going to.
But it would be nice to get our part of it off.
Right.
And running.
Yeah.
By next Monday if we could.
Yeah. Uh, that brings us to public comment number two. Seeing none. Board business, we have some applications. Uh, well, we do have some, uh, general assistance. I'll just, I'll start go, what I'll do is I'll just go through the folders. So on the first one, we have the, uh, guide rail repair. Uh, this is that fifty feet of steel beam guardrail on Old Coach Road. This is the one indicated, uh, that was, uh, they had budgeted three thousand. The total of this is seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-five-twenty-five, but the rest of it will be coming out of the block grant items.
That's what Phil discussed earlier?
Yep. Uh, we have some general assistance for rent. Another general assistance for rent. This one just has some payroll items that you can review and sign off on, so that'll cover that one. Uh, we'll jump into this one. This is the, uh, this is the, all the POs associated with, uh, the Bell and Flynn for the paving that Phil discussed earlier. So we just need to sign, I believe, the top one that shows the the changes in it, and this is all coming out of the highway block grant. Newfound title services, please vote and sign to switch the company for licensing. This says licensing and deed.
It's, uh, leaning and deeding, it's what Tammy spoke about.
Okay.
She has that contract every year, and she's switching companies.
Okay. There's, but there's no pay, there's no cost change associated?
Uh, I think she said it was a little less.
Okay, so it's a little bit less on there, so looks like. Total premium is going to be two-thousand-forty-seven-fifty cents.
Is that the one that Tammy was talking about?
Yeah. All right, so the board does just need to take a vote to approve this update. Does any, want to pass this around, people can look at it? Okay, has everyone seen it? You, you, all right. So I need a motion to approve the newfound title services change to the new, uh, leaning and deeding. Second, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Susan, did you get the?
Yeah, the assessing, the like, uh, leaning and deeding contract.
And that's just one signature.
Yes.
So.
Tammy might actually. Is there an actual signature for me on this, Susan?
I don't know.
Can you, I, I. Yeah, it's.
They gotta have dates.
Yeah, we gotta just fill out the top and then see, I don't know if Tammy signs that or if we sign that. Uh, we have, we have the revised letter from the Board of Selectmen, uh.
I was waiting to hear. I meant to ask Melissa before she left if next Monday was all right, but we've tended to do it next Monday, have it come here.
Yeah, so I would probably say we'll probably do that first prior to that, maybe that public hearing. Okay. It's that one. So we have that letter in there, and then we got a butter notice for a shoreline permit at one Seventh Street, tax map U four, lot one eighty-five, Kingston, New Hampshire. Uh, this, dear of butter, this letter is to inform you, are we intent to file an application with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, for a shoreline impact permit? RSA four eighty-three B for the work at the following address, one Seventh Street, Kingston. The application will be filed with the department next week, uh, and it just goes on to say that they're not required to notify us, I'm guessing because we are on a butter to this property, the town. So just informational only. Uh, is anyone, uh, all done? Oh, no, somebody needs this one.
I think it's a letter and you have, we need to all sign.
Yeah, we gotta, we want to sign the, uh, the letter coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Let's see, we got, uh, meeting minutes?
So moved.
So you're making a motion to approve both public and non-public meeting minutes from, uh, it would have been the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Correct.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, on, on the draft meeting minutes, it says the sixteenth. So can we just amend that motion to say the twenty-third minutes as amended? Uh, town hall budget items, Paula has some paperwork to review. It's on here? Or is, or is that the discussion about the executive budget? Okay. Which will be, which will be forthcoming?
So I thought Susan was going to hand out the budget.
This, it was based on this whole thing?
Yeah.
Do you want me to make copies now then, or do you want to wait?
Um, it's up to you, do you want to?
I can run down.
What, is it a discussion about the planning for the twenty-twenty-four budget? Or I I think I'd almost rather us have an opportunity to look at it, so we can have, prepare some, prepare any questions or concerns that we may have?
We haven't seen it yet.
Right, and that's why I, I gave it to her last, on Friday.
I thought you were going to pull out certain items, I guess that's what's the difference.
I put it together the best I could, um, based on what I know for contracts and everything. There's a few line items, I highlighted different colors, just so that, um, there's a few line items that I just really want to go over, to make sure we don't.
Okay.
Shortfall ourselves for next year.
Yeah, because I know there's been a lot of stuff that's come up this year that got overlooked.
So, um, I think I have all the contracts for Select Board.
Okay. Yeah, so so if Susan could distribute that to all of us, I'd like us to all have an opportunity to look through it, to come up with questions.
What was the blue? The blue was, um.
The blue was, I estimated, so what I did for like the departments I didn't have, and for any of the ones for the Select Board that I did the best I could. Um, I highlighted blue just so more I knew that we had to get more information. But I did put numbers in there, I just, for the small groups that I didn't have, I just put prior years in, just so that, because the budget committee wants the bottom line, so.
Uh, I did have one more item under, uh, that we had to vote on, just that we have to accept, vote to accept the donation that's been made to the Conservation Commission uh, from the pollinator pathways of New Hampshire. Uh, so it's from the Menadnock Garden Club, uh, and it's in regard to the pollinator pathways. Uh, so it's a five-hundred-dollar donation to the Kingston Conservation Commission, so I'd take a motion to accept that donation and allow it to be deposited in the Conservation Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Yes, with great thanks, yeah. Down to Susan. Uh, any other business? I don't, I don't think that non-public is needed. Okay. Is it? Oh, is, okay, is that still needed? Okay, well, then I will take a motion to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one A three, Roman numeral two, section. Uh, it's going to be the contract one, I don't know what letter that one is off the top of my head. Legal.
So moved.
Take a roll call vote, Ellie?
Yes.
Aye, yeah, yes.
Glenn? I'm a yes.
Yes.
Lori's a yes. Chuck is absent at the moment, uh, but we will be in non-public.
He'll be back.
He'll be back.